The first of numerous sessions, workshops on establishing the 2018 budget for the city of Oshkosh. We would like to end this at seven o'clock. We have a full agenda, so I would encourage everyone to respect everyone's time and keep on, keep on mission so we can end this at seven. We had a long night last night, so with that, I will turn it over to City Manager Rooff.
I'm just going to go over the agenda real briefly, and then Finance Director Larson's going to go into the guts of it. She and her staff have done a wonderful job of compiling a lot of information that I think will be useful. Just want to go through the agenda so that if you anticipate a question, take a look ahead, it might be, might be getting answered for you over the course of the presentation. But we're going to do a lot of, there's a lot of stuff in here for history. I would encourage you to take a look at it. If you were here last year, you got the same stuff, we just have an extra year added to it. But we want to talk a lot about shared revenue, talk about that story in terms of what, what's happened with shared revenue? What's happened with expenditures? And then, as a result of that, what's happened with property taxes as a result of that? And then, we're going to get into assumptions that, that we're making as staff as we're looking ahead to the budget. Direction we've already given departments, assumptions that we're making, logic behind some of these, particularly personnel. And that's why Mr. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Resch are here to talk about personnel issues, particularly health insurance is going to be one. Then, we're going to get into a little bit of debt, talk about that. There's a little bit of good and bad with that, but we want to talk about that. And then, the levy. Council, several of you had given me very similar thoughts, and Trina got the same thing in terms of what would be the impact of a 0% levy change, one through five? So, we're going to go through that for you, just to give you an idea of what it would look like. And then, just talk about the workshop and get some direction from you where you want to go with that. And then, the workshop, just what we're going to cover at the next workshop. So, if you'll look ahead, see what we're going to be doing on the next one to get you a flavor of what we're focusing on today and what we're going to focus on next time. And really, this is just to set you up so that the fewer surprises you get when you see the budget, the better. If this gives you some inkling of what's going to happen, that's great. If you can give us some ideas of things that you're looking for, that would certainly help us. And with that, I'm going to turn over to-
Before we go any further, I did, there was some breaking news over the afternoon, which could seriously affect our budgets over the next few years. Foxconn has announced that they will be building a plant in Wisconsin, and that there's about $1 to $3 billion worth of federal, state, and local incentives that will be channeled to a highly profitable company.
Built in the southeast part of the state.
Yes, down in Racine County. So, it will be interesting to see what happens now related to, because obviously, many of those incentives are going to be tax-related. So, it's something that we may have, that we should probably be keeping our eye on.
Yes, indeed.
The announcement was made this afternoon, and supposedly, there's a formal announcement in Wisconsin tomorrow. But the, the news is anywhere from $1 to $3 billion worth of incentives, which based on the jobs that they're talking about, is about $100,000 per job that would be created.
For three to five years, and then goes automated, maybe lose all those jobs.
They're low-paying jobs, too. They're not family-earning jobs.
Even at, like I say, even at the low end, that's $100,000 per job.
Talking 10,000 jobs.
Eventually, it's 3,000 to start.
But low-paying.
$10, $12 an hour, yeah.
It'll be interesting to see how that impacts the state budget.
Yep, that's why I said, I just wanted to bring it out there, because I'm sure it's going to affect us somehow. Not that I'm against jobs coming to Wisconsin, but-
Even though we finished $48.50 states, we're getting a big job growth.
He didn't get his $250,000 jobs either.
All right.
Would you like us to start?
I just, you know, I figured since we're going to be talking bad news, I just wanted to get that bad news out there.
Well, that is an excellent segue into, usually, we start talking with where we're at with the state budget, because traditionally, they have already adopted that in previous years. You'll see that that's not on our agenda for our first council workshop, because the state has not adopted their biennial budget. And so, we will leave that discussion, and hopefully, it will be preceding us here in August. We have taken a couple of different approaches in this year's workshop, tried to introduce some more graphs for different types of learners, and for our public at home to help understand better what we're talking about, and some of the challenges that we're really going to face in this budget cycle. The first item that I would direct your attention to is page one through page three. What we are looking at is looking at our general fund overall, and breaking it out by what I would call major category, and looking at how we have the expenditures that those funds have incurred over the last 10 years. And this is one thing that the mayor and I spoke about, and attended a session down in Madison, and thought we should do this and apply this concept directly in Oshkosh. What this spreadsheet is indicating, you'll see that over the 10-year period, we've had a growth in our levy of the $4,784,072. If you start to break that out over by major category, what you'll notice is that you'll see that public safety has been $4.4,749,534 of that levy increase. You can see that there's been an overall decrease in general government. You'll see a decrease in public works that is attributed to a change in accounting, so not a decrease in budget. And then, you'll see the other smaller increases in the major categories below, such as parks, community development, Department of Transportation, and unclassified. And, and really, that's a lot of numbers until you turn the page, and I think the graphic is a really good depiction of what those numbers mean. You'll notice down at the bottom, each category has its own color for representative purposes, and you'll see that orange being the public safety. So, you can see that one focus for the city of Oshkosh truly has been a commitment into loving, into our public safety departments here, and that other departments have seen increases, but not in comparison to what we have contributed to our public safety departments.
This is, these are the operational budgets, so this is actually the day-to-day operations, personnel-
Yes, yep.
Which personnel makes up, is it about?
That's one of the charts here to see, it's about three-quarters.
So, about 75% is, is bodies. And there was much ado made about Act 10, which was to give the cities and localities the tools, but the one part of Act 10 that were the public safety unions were left out of, sorry about that, were left out of Act 10.
Correct.
How many government benefit the motion, Act 10, 32, is there, human services, protective service status compared to municipalities?
So, you can see that that's, that's pointing out large, the line share of the increase was for public safety, which was really interesting when you see it graphically.
And the, you mentioned an accounting change for public works. Those are the accounting change that-
So, that was moving recycling out of the general fund into a special revenue fund, yep. So, the next graph is just looking at those same numbers in a different representation on page three.
Thank you for that, by the way.
You're welcome. It, when the mayor and I saw it, it was, you know, we both kind of looked at each other, and we're like, you know, it'd be interesting to know where we're at. And I was surprised when I actually ran it and applied our numbers into it. So, I think that's helpful to know that we are committed to the public safety, and, and that the citizens of Oshkosh, through their property tax increases, have heavily supported that role and that level of expenditures for us to continue to keep this city safe.
Trina, what falls under the unclassified?
So, that is what's more like miscellaneous. Pay-for-performance goes in there, legal contracts that are worked through the city attorneys, so special legal council arrangements, those types of items.
Isn't that where the sick leave payout is?
Yes, and sick leave payout is in there in, starting 2017.
Trina, question on community development. That does not include the tip really, correct?
Correct, yep, those would be in separate funds.
And then, also, where does the, can't we, last year, something different with retirement accounts, so they didn't go in each budget?
Sick leave payouts at retirement, that's the unclassified.
Okay, okay.
That's unclassified.
Okay.
I'm not sure where necessarily you were going, but community development moved out inspections, and that accounts for the decrease between 2015 and 2016.
And you mentioned public works being separate. Can you go further into, being a separate, what do you mean by that?
You said general government, public works, you said recycling. Recycling program was taken out of the general fund because of expenditure restraint purposes, so-
Okay, so where did that end up, then?
Separate fund.
Just as a separate, like an enterprise fund, or?
A special revenue fund, that we did adopt the recycling fee, and so, that's the primary funding source for that. We get money from the state. The city doesn't subsidize that right now, correct?
Correct.
But that's the one that got a, was it last year, $400,000 cut or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, so that's just getting by.
Right.
But that accounts for a little bit of that decrease. So, there, there are decreases in there, but you can see that of the stuff that's remaining, the increase is essentially for public safety. There's other increases and decreases, but even parks and other facilities and communities-
So, in the public safety, what's the increases? Was it like the fire trucks we bought last year?
Those are off that list.
Are you talking all about salaries and fringes and-
This doesn't include CIP.
Correct.
Oh, this is operate, this is-
90%, we use 75%, and we get asked that question all the time. And 75% is the average, but in police and fire, it's 90%. So, there's, there's police officers, there's firefighters, there's police cars, and there is small equipment, radios, things like that. Those are the things that are essentially, and training, which is a huge part of both public safety realms. That's their budget. When you get into line items, there's not a lot of line items to talk about when 90% of the budget's all personnel. I think the biggest line item, body cam storage. Remember, we got the body cams for free. We paid for the storage. That's 50 grand. Another big one in there is vehicle maintenance, about 50 grand a year. Police vehicles, because they don't have as long a life, 200,000 a year that we put in for vehicles, because that's just what we do. You don't see that in fire, because there's very few vehicles that fall under that category. With fire, a lot of it's inspecting equipment, you know, getting the ladders inspected, getting the D-FIBs inspected, things like that.
Personnel protective gear, uniforms.
Turnout clothing.
Turnout, yeah, the, the life vests, you know, all that stuff. It's just to make sure that that officer or firefighter, when they're out on the street, they are, they're equipped and ready to go. So, there's not much, so it's 90%. So, that 75% is a little misleading, because some departments have more, some departments have less, but it averages out 75.
So, going forward, then, we can start on page four. That is the traditional analysis that we do like to look over. It flows all the way until page six. It gives us a real good historical perspective of where we have been and where we're going. So, the first chart would be reflective of the tax rate. You'll see that our 2016 slash 2017 tax rate was $10, 10.344 for the mill rate. This was the, not the first time we did go over $10. You'll see back in 2004, 2005, we did have the mill rate of $10.57. But that gives you a good perspective of where we're, where we've been and where we're going. The equalized rate, that's just using equalized value versus assessed value. The levy history, again, just a real good perspective of where our levy has been and where it currently is at. In the current 2017 budget, you'll see the $36,297,700. The expenditure history, that would be referencing specifically the general fund and the special revenue funds. So, looking at the overall total expenditures between those funds, the one thing that I would notate that you will, you might notice yourselves, that the 2016 and 2017, the expenditures did only, they increased 1.15%. So, historically, it's been a moderate climb in, in increase of those expenditures.
It's really, taking a look at it, if you take a look at '09 through today, the average annual increase is 1.53%. Unfortunately, the increase in the levy is more multiple percentage points, so you can see that we're going to get into the, the cause of that, because even though the expenditures have been relative, arguably, held in check, I think 1.5 is pretty reasonable, but the levy increases, your increases that you've been approving have been much greater. So, why is expenditure not so high, but revenue, but property tax higher? Well, that goes into, that gets into shared revenue and things like that.
Do we ever compare this with inflation?
I have.
Well, we're governed by the expenditure restraint program, which a, a large component of the expenditure restraint program is the CPI. So, we're governed by that, and last year was in the, the mid-ones, mid-1%, which is why our 1, 1.15%. So, and we've done things, creative things, to move, to keep in compliance, moving the recycling program a couple of years ago was done in large part, we could, the council could have approved that recycling fee and kept it in the general fund, but we would have been out of compliance with expenditure restraint. So, it was, it was sort of a, a two-pronged approach to, to comply with expenditure restraint. But the reality is, our expenditures aren't going up that much, but boy, our, our levy continues to increase, and that, the council has commented on that, begrudgingly voting on the, on the levy, but at the same time recognizing that's barely keeping us above water on the expenditure side.
So, well, so that some of those offsets are, you know, causing the levy increase would be the fact that we're shifting from big-box stores to local, to the residential as well as the small business property tax owners, that the state is not fully funding their payment for municipal services. Again, no one here at this table is beating up on the city, on the state, but we're just basically stating facts, that there are things that the state requires us to do, protect their local properties, and they made a bargain that said, okay, you do that for us, you cannot tax our property, so therefore, we'll make you whole, we will cover your, we'll, we'll make sure that you get your, reimbursed for your services, so that's going down, correct? As well as shared revenues.
Shared revenue is a huge-
As well as now, we may also be seeing a reduction coming in the next biennial budget of the, removing the personal property taxes. So, while taxes may be going down at one level, they're being shifted to another entity.
I think that's a good point, and I think, you know, you see that on page six, too. The, you know, the first few years of this review, starting in 1999, you didn't see a lot of negative revenue numbers, but beginning, you know, starting in '06 and going forward, quite a few of them. So, it kind of illustrates that point.
And you really, oh, excuse me, mayor?
The session Trina and I went to in Madison about a month ago, the subject matter was finding new revenue sources for communities. So, every city and village in the state recognizes the need to find new sources for revenue, because what is happening at the state level?
And I think that's a very, a topic that we're going to also cover again. We're covering for Trina at the Urban Alliance meeting, we're, the mayor and I are going to the finance officers meeting, just because we keep, we like beating ourselves up listening to this stuff. But again, the same topics are there, and it's a different twist on it, but raising revenues for local governments because, because of this. And if you transition over to page 10, there's a lot of history here, but this one, and it goes to Tom's point about shared revenue. Trina, why don't you walk me through this sheet?
So, what this is giving us is a historical perspective of our general fund revenues. So, you'll see in the first column, we have our shared revenue, which is segregated into its own GL account. You can see from 2007 through 2016, we have lost $1,390,847.21 in funding from the state. That would be a, a direct burden shift to the residents and the property owners here in the city of Oshkosh. If you then skip over to what is called other, all other general fund revenue, that would be the other revenue sources that are considered general fund revenue. Some examples might be some police and fire fees, some miscellaneous or sundry receipts. You'll see that-
Property tax.
Oh, yes, and property taxes. So, you'll see, as the shared revenue has continued to decrease, what the impact of that has been is the city's need to try to create fees locally to subsidize or, or to offset that reduction from the state level. And so, you'll see that the all other general fund revenue, that started lower, and it's continued to climb, and, and that's one of the reasons we do need to continually evaluate our permits and our fee structures, because as we lose more federal and state funding, we have to offset that with something, and that's one of the tools that we have.
Or consider reduction in services.
Correct.
Correct.
And when the line share of our increases have gone to public safety, you're de facto saying it's about public safety you're going to decrease. You can take a look at the second last column, our percentage of shared revenues of our total budget has dropped from 28.64%, nearly 29%, to about 22.5%. So, you can see just functionally how that's just really had a hit. And this is only one isolated revenue. It's certainly a big revenue in terms of the, in terms of what shared revenue means, that's an important one. But the payment for municipal services program, certainly not as big, but the cut has been more substantial there. But you can see that the, the shared revenue program has been frozen or cut since the year 2000. It's been that long since the shared revenue program saw any increase for, for inflation or for sharing the revenue. We're getting nine point, we, over the last four years since Acts 10 and 32, that's when the last big cut came. They, they enabled us to cut some benefits for employees, and that justified them cutting shared revenue, and that was viewed to be a, a dollar-for-dollar change. It was more like a $1.50 for a dollar change, but it was a change nonetheless. But since 2012, when it was $9,670,000, we've gotten an increase of about $12,000 on a $10 million payment, so that is .12%.
That was a $1.50 lost in revenue offset, quote/unquote, offset by a $1 cut in expenditure.
Correct.
So-
The net loss.
Net loss is 50 cents is, is-
That is correct.
So, much for, so much for the tools.
So, anyway, this gives you a rough idea of what, what the shared revenue program is.
And on page 11, I, there's some graphic depictions that I think tell the, tell the story really better through a picture, to look at that historical perspective of the shared revenue, and then look at it from the perspective, the first graph on the left, looking that the shared revenue and the percent of contribution that that shared, shared revenue offset in total revenues compared to the graph on the right showing the all other general fund revenues having to start to climb up to offset those reductions. So, this is just looking at exclusively shared revenue, but as Mark mentioned, there are other revenues on the state and federal level that have, have seen a reduction, and on some, on some level, we need to recover or look at services. Does anybody have any questions on that?
You know, it'd be, it'd be interesting to see what the, the budget picture would be like had shared revenues even remained, because when you look at '07, '08, '09, '10, '11, you know, it was north of $10,500,000. Now, we're down around 9 million, a little over 9,500,000. Would be interesting to see what the levy picture would have been had shared revenues stayed the same.
I believe it would have been drastically, it would be well below $10 per thousand. I, I'll say it, I think it's a direct, I think there's a direct correlation there.
But then it comes down to the question, how do we get that out to our citizens? Because all they look at is what we say.
Of course, I was thinking the same thing.
State of Wisconsin, you know? I mean, and then when you talk to your legislators, they say, well, you guys just don't cut the fat out of your budget.
Well, they, you know, and again, the thing is, is that is, is, you know, Tip O'Neill, love him or hate him, always said that all politics is local, and the funny thing is, is that most people focus at the federal level, which, yes, it does, it impacts your daily life, but the federal level really does not impact your daily life as much as your local level does. And people are more concerned about what's going on in Washington and Madison than they are at the local level until, you know, and then the thing is, is that, and then also at the local level, city of Oshkosh taxpayers, they get the little love note, and it's from the city of Oshkosh, but that also includes Winnebago County, the Oshkosh area school district, the technical college. And we have to educate the public, yes, but I think the public also needs to educate themselves on the civics of it, and where all of these entities fall into place.
Page 12 is, goes back to your earlier question about percentage of expenditure breakdown by personnel versus non-personnel costs. So, it's been hovering in and around the 75% figure. We have made some personnel reductions, a lot of health insurance in recent years, I think it's gotten down from 75%, but still, there's not much more. But it's generally a service-based organization, so when there are expenditure hits, they're generally going to be because of expenditure, because of personnel cost.
When you, when you say service, that was an interesting, when I was down in Madison testifying against with the Ways and Means Committee about AB 386 and 387, which is the dark store theory in the Walgreens, I was asked by one of the people, what would you do if those aren't approved? I said, we're a service business, and that means we are, we in other cities are cut, we're forced to cut services. So, I think that's a message we have to get across, that we are a service business, pure and simple.
You know, and, and just doing some, some math, simple math there, personnel expenditures from most, from '16 to '17 increased, you know, many people talk about overpaid government employees. The increase- employees. The increase in personnel expenditures was 1.03%.
That's the history, now we're looking forward. So it took us about a half hour to get us through some of the history. So Trina's got some preliminary budget assumptions that are going in there, so we want to go through that.
So what we have issued to all departments for their preliminary budget assumptions, I've included in your packet. I'll highlight a few of them for you. The health insurance is, has been proposed at the consistent 12 or 15% contribution of employees. If you take an HRA assessment, you contribute to 10, 12% of the premiums. If you do not take the HRA, then you need to contribute 15% to the premiums. We have our Wisconsin Retirement Program. I've also given, that is something that is given to us from ETF, and so we have our new employer share this year. The general contribution for the general employees or the non-rep employees is going down a tenth of a percent, but both of our protective service categories are going up this year for the employer contribution.
And the reason being?
It's all based on the performance of the fund, and so it's performing better on the general side and probably bigger payouts or more payouts because of increased retirements. Statistically, it's taken more swings in recent years, so I think the market, everything from '08 is starting to settle down because now you're looking back at about '12 and '13, so things are a little more stable market-wise. So these are more, these are what I've been more used to over 20 years. A .1 or a .03 movement rather than a 1% movement, which really rocks our world because that's a hidden cost. We can talk about, we're assuming, as you see at the top, a 2.5% wage increase, but if a 2.5% wage increase is assumed, but you have a half percent increase in your retirement benefit, that's really doing a lot more than a 2.5% increase. Those wage-based benefits, which Trina will summarize in a moment, you see the impact of those things because when they go up, they go up a lot. And these are more modest, but look at the fluctuation we had. The 2014 rate for a protective was 11.61%. It went down as low as 9.49, now it's back up to 10.93. So you can see it just goes up and down. It, it needs to start stabilizing, and this is the first year it's really done a modest increase as opposed to something wild.
So going into page two, we have our utilities as well as our, our fuel assumptions that we will start with as part of the budget process. Those continue on into page 15. And then finally, we have our utility rate assumptions. I will note to you that the increases that are in the utilities, the water sewer and storm, those are from a preliminary cash flow analysis of these utilities. It is still in draft form, so they are not a, the final percent, and we'll discuss it in further when we get to those department budget presentations. But, so those are put in as the placeholder right now because it's the, the information that we have in draft form. So those are the assumptions that all departments will build their base operations budgets on.
Trina, just as, just as a side note, knowing that like some of this isn't going to be incorporated in our assumptions, you know, when it comes to the diesel fuel, the gasoline, you know, those types of natural resources, they're forecasting that the prices, the barrel prices, and based on that you've got-
Are correct, at least for the next four quarters, unless something significant would happen in the Middle East. So as long as that everybody plays nice in the Middle East, we should be able to keep, keep these, these prices, and it should stay around that $45 to $50 a barrel, you know, versus like we've seen, what was it, a couple of years ago where it was over $100 a barrel?
The one thing I would notate for you that isn't in this assumption page, but it was in a budget memo to all departments, the expectation that has been given to all departments is that they will submit an operating budget with operating costs that do not exceed over 0% of the previous year's budget. The only calculations that they will be allowed to remove are their wages, benefits, utilities, and fuels, so the items that they don't have control over. So the budgets that we will be bringing forward started with a 0% increase on the base budget.
So things like training, equipment, contracts, things like that, we're asking them to hold it to zero. So if they have increases in one area, they have to, if those increases in another. That's, that's the basic guideline. That, last year was the first time we gave them anything above a zero in probably five years. That's been general. But we do recognize that commodities go up and down. In the case of like a Public Works, which has fuel as a big part of their budget, we're looking at a decrease. They don't get to move the savings from fuel to another area. We cover them when they're up, and they have to, we have to take those savings when they go down. So Public Works, Public Works is the primary buyer of fuel. They buy it for everybody because it's a central garage budget. So we just make sure that that's covered there. So you can see that, for example, diesel fuel's going down from our budget to budget is going down about 28 cents, but that's because we've been buying it at a buck ninety-five. So we can conservatively easily go to 250 a gallon, assuming nothing bad happens in the Middle East, like Councilmember Allison Osby talked about. So again, our crystal ball is, is no better than yours, but these are the assumptions we go in, depending on what happens later on with the budget. Trina and I will look at it and say, can we push the envelope a little more? Because even a nickel a gallon can get us some savings. And when we're, when we're trying to push the envelope on balancing the budget, we will look at those things. But we also, we, we look at, for example, what the Department of Transportation puts out as their estimates because they reimburse, for example, the bus system based on a number for fuel. So we'll take a look at that number and we'll use that as a benchmark for our own purposes. We might push the envelope with some non-transit, but we got to be careful because the history just, we all know what happened in '08 and '09.
So that would lead us into our, we're on item two, section B. This is the traditional analysis that we have utilized in past years. I apologize, it's a little small. So if you do want a larger copy, please let me know.
We're on page 17.
There are some assumptions we have mentioned, but I'll mention again. So the assumptions that are used to create this model were a 2.5% raise for personnel. We used an assumption of a 8% increase of health insurance and a 5% increase in dental insurance. And how this model works is we take the previous year's projected year, and that starts our base, and we build it off of actual then, and we update it to reflect actual, and then build our projection year. So what I've tried to do is highlight what's really important on this, and that would be what's in blue and what's in orange and what's in purple. So when we look at wage increases, we try to segregate this by funding type or funding source. So that first box, or the one that has the blue, would be the employees that fall under the general fund. What you will see is in analyzing and running this model, that if a 2.5% wage increase is given, that this will have a $977,000 estimated impact on the levy. Moving into the next column-
Just so you know, just in terms of what that means, that includes wages and wage-based benefits. WRS is a classic example. That also includes our, the two and a half, but it also includes pay for performance. It also includes any step increases. So, you know, we do benefit when we have a, a higher-paid employee that retires or leaves us, and we replace that person with somebody at the bottom end of the scale. And that gives us a nice one-time bump, but eventually that person will work their way back up through, through their, through the range that we've established for them. So the first few years, an employee doing, performing and learning and improving on the job will get a step increase, more so than somebody at the higher end of the scale. So it just moves a little faster at the lower end, and it moves slower at the top end of the scale. That's because it's entirely pay for performance at the upper end of the scale. So we get savings and then we have to start over again. So those can be as much as a 2.5% increase, base building adjustment for those folks on top of the, across the board. So, and that's just three and a quarter ends up being the amount when you factor all that stuff together. And that's why Karen's here, because Karen is the one who does all the number crunching. She knows this stuff and, and analyzes it to make sure we have a fair representation of, of what we're doing here. I'm sorry, I just wanted to get the editorial-
And that's a very good example. Looking, if you do specifically look at steps, you'll see how we are utilizing that step program, and there is a benefit for the city because we are starting employees at the lower rate, and as they increase in proficiency, you'll see that steps in 2017 were 109, but in 18, we're, we are projecting 135,000. So what that's telling you is we have more employees in the steps and they're starting to progress through that wage scale.
And just to add to that, it means that more are retiring, that we're up at the higher end, than we're hiring people that are at the lower.
What, I was going to ask you, Fitz, what-
Yeah.
-number, like when we were talking about equipment operators a few years ago, when they retire, they're up here, was that about a $5 an hour swing?
I think we calced it to be like, was it like 30%? Was it that high?
Yeah, okay.
Something like that in terms of a swing. Now, we don't always hire people at the men, we try to do that, but, but it's a pretty big swing.
So what's your anticipation this year of retirement?
We get, we have quite a few retirements projected in police and fire, actually.
We've got a page for that.
Yeah, so you're, you're tracking pretty well and we're getting to that.
Maybe you're close, it's on the next page, actually.
That is a good thing to look at.
So the, the middle column then would be general fund supported. So those would be departments such as museum, parks, recycling, garbage, senior center. So the impact, the total aggregate impact of that would be, you know, the estimated So what truly for levy perspective, you want to add together general fund and general fund contributed to get the estimated overall impact of approximately a million dollars.
And one more thing that I can, without going too deeply into the numbers, you know, because Trina brought it up with the steps, one thing that we have with the pay-for-performance program is when we hire somebody in at the beginning, it takes a while for us to evaluate them, so they're not eligible for that program right away because they're brand new, and we need to evaluate them for a year. So you'll notice that if you look at the PFP, pay-for-performance versus the steps, that that number is reduced. So that's another benefit when we take somebody that's a high, higher-paid employee that's on the upper end of the scale, and then they retire and we bring them in at the beginning, they're not eligible for that PFP program right away because we don't have a year of time to evaluate them.
Out of this, what is the number for PFP overall?
It's listed just-
121,400 for general fund and general fund supported. It's that purple, the column that is purple at the top, about, on the second half of that, 2018, general fund supported.
Fourth row down.
Is 121,400 compared to 126,500 for 2017. Do you follow?
Um, no, I'm not finding that.
Okay.
Right here. Yep, okay.
And then just compare that to the previous year, same number.
It's down about $5,000.
Right.
And that's just on the general fund side. So because of the, the focus on general fund and levy, we, we try to focus on those that are, that are impacting the general fund. You can see the other ones that are impacted by some of the other non-general fund, non, non-levy supported, but that gives you a good number. But the number that Trina's highlighted, the purple number, probably middle of the page, it's the first purple number, you see the $1,046,000. You're going to see that number later on when we try to tie it all together. So, but that's the impact of a 2.5% across the board with the assumptions that we've just described to you.
So then down at the bottom of your sheet, what we are looking at is the projected amount of health and dental insurance. Again, we have the categories broke out by general fund and general fund supported in colored for you. You'll see the, the purple column to indicate the general fund and general fund supported. It's projected that though the 8% health insurance and the 5% dental insurance will cost in approximately $577,000.
So that's another number to keep, to keep in mind. And with that said, that's where John and Pam come in. John and Pam have been meeting with our insurance consultants, they polled Trina and I as well, but getting an idea of what we're looking at for next year. That's a number that we've used in the past. We have options that will likely go higher and can go lower. Obviously, the more you do status quo, the higher it gets, the more you cut the benefit, the lower it gets. So we're evaluating those things and, and we'll be coming back to you, but for purposes of our analysis here, we're using 8% on the health insurance side and 5% on the dental. And those are the numbers that we, that's the direction we give to Karen, so as she's putting the numbers together, that she works with departments to compile these numbers so that when you see police, you know it's got the police request, but Karen has those numbers, so she has a good feel for that the assumptions are correct and they're consistent. And we want to make sure they're consistent because if one department's doing another way, one department's doing it one way, another's doing another way, that's, that's just not good for us as trying to balance it and give it to you. And we want to make it as simple as possible to explain it, especially at this point, because we're still just, we're working on some higher-level projections right now. But this is the direction we're giving them, and this is, Karen's been meeting with the departments over the last couple of weeks, and these are the assumptions that we're using at this time.
Regarding health insurance, with the ACA, there's the ability for children to stay on their parents' policies through the age of 26. There's many companies out there that basically have found it cheaper to incent a new, maybe college graduate, to basically what they do is they say, look, we will give you an additional X number of dollars on your pay if you stay on mom and dad's plan. Because it's actually, in doing that, when you do the math, it's actually cheaper to give them a few bucks more in pay than it is to go and buy, you know, than to add them to our insurance. Do, have we looked at anything similar to that? I know that basically with everything that's going on, that could go away, but that is something that I just wanted to throw that out, that there are, like I say, there's many organizations that are out there doing this.
Right, we, we haven't looked at that specific one. We have looked at other incentives for people to, if they have insurance somewhere else, that they get a bonus. The research that we've done as it relates to that particular option is that it really doesn't alter behavior. The, the one that I'm talking about, not, not the one that you recommend or you mentioned, Tom, but because they're going to go where they're going to go anyway, and they just then take that extra money for the one that I just described. But we haven't evaluated the other option that you just mentioned.
I also know that there's other, there's actually, and, and there's places that if a husband works one place and a wife works another place, that employers will actually disincent to add that spouse.
Yeah, those are called carve-out provisions.
Right, also carve-outs and things like that. We have looked at all that.
Okay. I'd imagine you did by just, you know-
Yeah.
So then going forward on to page 18 was Councilmember Herman's question. What we've done is a preliminary analysis- What we've done is a preliminary analysis of anticipated payouts for the general fund. Currently in our unclassified fund, we are only allocating funding for general fund employees. And the good news on this is we do anticipate to see less retirees in the year of 2018. What does that mean to us from a budgetary standpoint? At this point, looking at it, we're anticipating that we should see less usage of about $40,000 currently. But that's a very preliminary indication and much could happen through the end of the year, but that's where we're at at this point in time.
And that does cycle up and down. This year, we had a lot of, a lot of folks in police and fire, obviously as you can see, believe us, and that jumped the number up.
It seems like in police and fire, there's kind of historical hiring bubbles, but when they go, a big chunk goes. So, it just so happened that we may not experience that in 2018, but you never know until it actually takes place, for sure.
Can we have the ability of offering similar to the university's early buyouts?
I can speak to that a little bit. It's been my experience that buyouts, it's very rare for them to work successfully. We offered one when we changed our pay structure because we altered the pay structure itself, so the starting pay was a lot less, kind of like when we move somebody from the max and start them again, just like we talked about earlier. So, when you offer the, an amount, you know you're gonna recover it because the person's gonna be starting at a lesser rate. In the university's case, it's my understanding that all those people that they're offering buyouts for, they're not replacing.
Right.
So, and that's a, and I'm not trying to be critical of the university, but that's a very dangerous undertaking and it assumes that you're overstaffed right now. And I don't believe we can make that assumption with our organization.
Well, in the Wisconsin retirement system, it's an age and service issue too, to when they can collect and how much they can collect. So, if you give a buyout, let's say 85 is the magic number, age and service equals 85, that's your max. You go out at 50, you're now at 75, so you're not gonna get as much in your retirement check. So, a buyout isn't an incentive to go. You're gonna be permanently cut for the rest of your career in your monthly check from the retirement system. So, buyouts, at least from the way I understand it, in protective services is not an incentive.
It's gotta be a real, it's a good question, but it's gotta be structured, I think, correctly, or it could end up being more detrimental, I think, to your organization. It worked for us when we had that pay structure shift because we could clearly see if somebody is above what we believe the max to be, let's just say they're making 50 bucks an hour, and then when we hire the new person, they're gonna be making 20 bucks an hour. That differential, we could offer a portion of that as a buyout incentive. But to just buy out and say that we're not gonna replace those employees in.
I wasn't suggesting that.
Right. And that's my understanding. I might be wrong that the university has that. There's, in our organization too, we're a little bit smaller, so we may have one individual employee that is the only person that does that job. So, to say, "If they retire, we're not gonna replace them," you know, I don't know if we could honestly say that, you know, straightforwardly, so.
For example, let's just say the person was a garbage hauler and we offered an incentive and that person took it. We would have to replace that person because that route still needs to get run, so we'd be cutting somewhere else. And those are the moving parts is can we make an adjustment depending on who leaves? A clerical person leaves, you might say, "Well, we can move this clerical person." Where we really want a clerical cut is over here, but the person who left is over there. We could move somebody over, but those are the types of things you have to take into consideration. And if they're not skilled to move into that position, then you have trouble.
One thing that we do do, and we do it with every position that we fill, is when a position becomes vacant, somebody's gonna be leaving or somebody's gonna be retiring. We have a dialogue with that department. We talk about, you know, how this can maybe be more efficiently managed or structured. And, you know, periodically, city manager Roth will communicate, "Hey, there was a little mini restructuring here and here or there." And departments are very aware of trying to do that to the best of their ability. And actually, they try to minimize the impact to the employees. So, oftentimes, if they have an idea to restructure in mind and the person is six months from retirement, you know, they'll postpone that restructuring if possible out of consideration for that employee. But when they do retire, they'll say, "Hey, you know, I think this provides us an opportunity to do this or that." So, you know, Pam is always talking to employees about that, supervisors and department heads about that regularly.
Well, you can see the fickleness with this because police is projected to be half of what it was in 2017, yet fire is probably about 60% greater than it was this year. So, those cycles do go through and you just have to prepare for those. Last year, Karen began doing an analysis of every employee who would be potentially eligible to retire over the next 10 years. So, if you are a public safety employee aged 40 or more, we're gonna start looking at you because we know that statistically you could retire. And so, we keep track of those employees. For non-public safety, it's more around the 45 mark. But knowing that somebody's eligible to retire doesn't mean they will.
Right.
We just had somebody retire at age 70 this year. And, you know, we're happy that they stuck around that long. But though, that's more the exception than the rule. And so, we do have to plan for somebody, if they're eligible to retire, we have to at least be ready for that possibility, even if they choose not to exercise it. So, that's the analysis that we're going through to come up with these numbers. And then, what we've been doing this year as a result of that, we're asking departments, "Look, we can't ask people to, and start inferring, 'Well, it's time for you to go.'"
Right.
"The watch says," or the time clock says this, but at the same time, people start talking and you get the word that, you know, "Time for Mark to retire" or something like that. At least I hope you're not thinking of that. But, you know.
I'll just.
Yeah, please leave it there. Thank you very much. We're running late, I think. But the reality is, is we have to do it politely and with respect to those folks. But if we get a good idea that somebody's retiring, it's like, okay, these are based on, I'd say, pretty good indications from individual employees, and I'm thinking of retiring next year. Most employees are pretty good about it. There've been a couple surprises.
I would say it's really improved since the time that I've been here. I mean, when I first started, sometimes people would leave badly a letter on their soup's chair. Whereas now, I think, you know, it's a pretty cohesive group and they'll, they know that there's gonna be an impact when they leave. So, they'll, when they know, when they make a decision with their family, they'll go to their soup and say, "Hey, I'm thinking about going. I just want you to know." So, you can start planning and, you know, we can start finding out about how exactly I might do my job if they aren't as clued in as they need to be because, you know, there's all kinds of little details that people have based on their institutional knowledge. So, I think our employees are pretty good about that. They're pretty respectful because they don't wanna make it much more difficult for their coworkers or their soup if they can help it, so.
In some cases, they're concerned that if their position isn't filled, that we have time to prepare people to take over those duties. A lot of them are very aware of the need for succession planning.
Right.
And, you know, if they have somebody in mind, they say, "Look, I think this person might be good. I need to start training that person." Or, "I don't have anybody that I think can take over. How are you guys gonna plan because I don't have anybody immediately available on the bench," as we call it. And we've been, we've been talking about bench strength a lot. That's been a very common term that we've used because we need to know if somebody goes down, do we have somebody on the bench to come up and take their place?
And, you know, that example that I gave when Lori asked the question about early buyouts, you know, I think a lot of soups have ideas about how they would like to have their area structured as we go forward in the future. So, they have the opportunity then to execute some of those plans when a person does decide to retire, so.
Is there any significant amount of cost savings if a person retires depending on the position that, I'll just throw it out. Hopefully, they don't take it personally, but say Parkland Rec. in the winter, they're not as busy as they are in the summer. Somebody retires out to wait six months to fill the position. Is there benefit to the budget by waiting to fill some?
Sure. I mean, we do that when it's possible and, you know, we rely on those salary savings, I think, budgetarily for us to be able to do what we do.
I know there's savings when a senior person goes out and you hire on the bottom end.
Right.
And move people up, but.
Yep. I think, you know, it's kind of a balancing act. I think those departments want to have those staff people in there as quickly as possible because they don't have a lot of flow to cover their work. But, and I like to think that, you know, we've improved in HR with the time that it takes us to recruit people. I think it's improved a little bit. Some recruitments take longer than others. I think, you know, Steve, police and fire takes a little bit longer because of everything that we have to go through with them. And so, we probably realize more salary savings with those types of employees through recruitment just because it takes a little bit longer.
And as I was talking, and I think you mentioned it here with page 17 about the Carlson and Deppman column, we're constantly, your staff is constantly doing that, keeping trends with the market.
Absolutely. We take a look at individual employees. We take a look at compression issues and we don't have any inversion stuff right now. We look at that all the time. And we'll probably be talking to Charlie Carlson at some point soon in the future about taking a look at the market study again. It's.
It's kind of old now, isn't it?
Well, we used to do it every 10 years. Now, it's probably every three and it might be in the budget this year for us to take a look at it next year. We'll see.
Have you seen a market fluctuation?
Oh, yeah. I think.
Gone through a whole cycle.
It has.
Really has. When you think about what the market rate for equipment operators back in 2011 when the survey was done, there were a lot of equipment operators out there. But quickly, as the economy started to recover, the equipment operators become a very hot commodity and we were starting to have to hire these folks.
For construction and trade areas.
Couple steps above.
Well, even higher up, let's just, you know, take, I'll use Trina's department, accountants. You know, now that, you know, the economy's different, there's the cost shift, hire experienced accountants harder to find and higher salary versus, you know, when the economy's maybe in the downward side a little bit.
Pam can speak to this too. Hope she doesn't mind if I just keep blabbering on, but I think accountants and finance people are special. We know they're special. But they're special because.
About time you recognize.
They're special in the government world because they can be private or public. So, they're much more difficult, I think, to secure and retain because they have that different option where other public positions are more unique and just centered on the public sector. So, they don't have that same flexibility as someone like Trina or her staff do where they can go private or public. So, it's a little tougher, I think, when they have that flexibility to get them and to keep them.
And at the same time, with the unemployment rate down, are we having any issues of getting a quality pool candidate, so?
I think we're doing pretty good. I don't want to speak completely for Pam, but I think we're doing pretty good with our recruitments.
We've been having good results with our recruitments and not running into these long-term recruitments where it's taking nine months or, you know, even more than a month to fill.
Failed.
Some positions, right, failed recruitments. Some are more difficult, but more recently, we haven't had trouble filling them.
I would say the pool maybe isn't as deep, but, you know, and I guess I can brag a little bit. I think people recognize us as a good employer, as an employer of choice. And some of the strategies that you've accepted and allowed us to implement has really helped that, benefits and pay-wise.
Because I just think since page 10 and 32, government service isn't quite as lucrative as it used to be.
It got a bad name, you know, that the benefits were taken away and things like that. But also, Oshkosh draws people. I mean, people want to come back to Oshkosh or live here from, you know, the delts or wherever they may have relatives, or they've been here before and they like it. So, we do have that going for us.
It's an attractive city. People think that it's very progressive. They like the fact that it's centrally located, they can get anywhere they want. Some of the programs that we have, I think they're are attractive that we sell, our clinic, our PFP program, the benefits that we provide. So, I think we got a pretty good, we got a fighting chance to get good people in here.
But it takes more work and the real indicator, I think Pam's had more success recently of not having failed recruitments, but there was, you were at a stretch where you were getting failed recruitments and that.
Yeah.
When you have a failed recruitment, you've put all that effort and gotten nothing out of it. That is, it's frustrating, but it's expensive. And it's not just the ads, it's all the time that the HR staff spend. When, the council chambers are probably used more for interviewing than they are for council meetings. I mean, we have that many interviews that are going on all the time. There'll be, there'll be a whole week where you'll see Pam or one of her staff members with a department because there's an HR person always in the interviews. There, virtually, there's a whole run, especially this past spring, where there was somebody from your office in there every day of the week.
Courtney, she's pretty busy. She's a person who does a lot of staffing.
Courtney does the recruiting.
Yeah. You know, the other thing I would say too is I think supply and demand is gonna be an issue for us in the future. You know, we talked about hiring bubbles for protective employees, but, you know, we have a big, we have the baby boomer population that is exiting the workforce. And, you know, when those people leave, it's a supply and demand issue. There's gonna be more jobs than there are gonna be people and I think that's gonna affect, that's gonna provide wage pressure. I really believe that. We haven't experienced it yet to a real large degree, but I think it's something that we just need to be aware of.
Is there any thought of down the line when you get, if that would happen of bringing back an employee on a limited-term basis or even a part-time basis because he knows the job, he can do it for a while till you fill in?
We do. We rely on that a little bit. There are limits with, that the state places on us and ETF places on us in regard to rehiring annuities and that sort of thing and.
There can't be any pre-deal.
Right.
As a lot of people know. Yes, I told Lori some stories about that.
Yeah.
But certainly, that's something that we could look at if, but we have to give the employee, by law, they have to separate service, no handshake, no wink.
Seventy, seventy-five.
Seventy-five. Seventy-five days.
And, you know, we've been pretty fortunate. If we have been in a bind, we've gone to some of our retirees and said, "Hey, could you help us out?" And haven't had anybody turn us down. And they know it's only for a short period of time until we might get a new specialized employee in and we've been pretty fortunate.
I know if someone retires out, I'll be an example. If you retire out on the W, you know, retirement system, you know, you can't take benefits, you can't have health insurance, you can only take a salary, you know, and you're right, it's 75 days out. You know, I went back to the county as a parks employee, but I couldn't go for, you know, 75 days. It was a year and a half.
You had to wait.
I had to wait.
That was another component of Acts 10 and 32 that not people are quite as aware of.
There were some changes.
So, we want to move on to debt service if you don't mind. Trina?
Well, this is the first sheet that you've seen. This is updated with our projected or our actual borrowing through the years 2017. In talking with Mark and preparing for our workshop today, he got so excited about it, he got me excited about it. And now, I just think it should become our brag book and I hope you all take it home and show your families and the citizens. This is a huge priority of the council and a direction that they gave the city manager. And we can report success and we can report success under the five years. What I would draw your attention to is the year of 2018, which is the year we're gonna be budgeting, and that we're gonna be at 69.53% of our debt capacity. That's the lowest it's been since 2009. So, that directive and that continued philosophical and management strategy of the 11,400,000 of evaluating our capital improvement program and prioritizing and assessing what really belonged in there is a huge component of success, which is much at the direction of the council. So, I think, I think I'm gonna take it home and show my family, but, so hopefully you will find that as exciting as we do.
It's man.
Who's excited too?
The real issue, the council had given us direction to have a five-year plan to have that done by 2020. We're two years ahead of that schedule. And it's not because the equalized value has gone up. If the equalized value go up, this thing would be plummeting, but our equalized value's been holding itself pretty tight.
And just to pat the council on the back a little. And just to pat the council on the back a little bit more, I think that, that decision and that plan was established before the council even directed us to pay off the ten million dollar.
WRS.
WRS. So I, I think it's, it's very good, but then that decision came afterwards, so I think it's even better.
Back to the equalized value, Mark. So my question is, and maybe I'm mistaken, but we did just have that revalue, reevaluation with the assessments. Would we not have increased based on that, our equalized value?
No, not necessarily. Number one, it was a reassessment. That affects assessed value. This is equalized value. So the state will. The, the market, the market has shown some bump. We're still freezing it. I anticipate that it could go up. And that would help our number go down even more, but we're just playing it safe because we don't want to overpromise and under-deliver. We know we're going to be borrowing eleven point four million next year, so that number we're, we're rock solid on. And you can see that beginning in two thousand fifteen, when the council gave that directive, you started to see, the number in the red, the increase from previous year. We've had a decrease in what we've taken on versus what we've retired. We retired more than we've taken on. And you can see one point eight million, six and a half million, three and a half million, four million in two thousand sixteen. We're going to be paying off four million more than we're taking on. That's very, that's, that's real positive news. So we're, we're turning the corner quicker than we thought. And I think it's also, and I gotta give kudos to Trina, because you see, we said, by policy, the council said eleven point four million. And we followed that, but you'll see that some of these debt principles taken on in two thousand sixteen, for example, was thirty million. We've done refinancing. So we've paid things off and taken it on. The thirty million was, was the peak, but that was because we paid off the WRS debt. So that was a huge increase, but it was a long-term, I mean, I, those of the council members that were on, remember that the, the value that we're getting out of that is going to be huge.
It was basically, if we would have continued on with where we were in WRS, we would have continued to make payments, but we would have not even been covering the interest with our payments. At the end of the term, we would have owed roughly sixteen million dollars or whatever. And that was call, it was callable at any time. Now, basically what happens by us taking on the additional ten million dollars, over the, the period of time, we pay, end up paying out slightly more than that sixteen million that we would have. Or whatever, we would have ended up paying like fourteen million, we'll pay about fifteen million out. But at the end of that time, rather than having that sixteen-plus million dollar balance, even netting off the additional million that we paid, that we paid by doing the refunding, we have a zero balance with WRS.
Right.
So net for the city would have been, at the end of it, there would have been, is, we saved the city in essence fifteen million dollars.
It was a good call and we're still two years ahead of schedule. And then I guess, you know, the other point I would make, back to the dialogue that Lori and, and City Manager Roloff had. If you look at those asterisks in that column by the equalized value, we're not assuming increases in equalized value either. So, I mean, this is, the schedule is based on that conservative assumption.
Speaking of asterisks, so the double asterisk next to our debt principal retired says that we're assuming a five percent interest rate. Are we?
We just put that in as a, as a conservative assumption.
Even though we're kind of more around three?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. So we're, we're conservative on the growth in the equalized value and we're conservative on the rate. You know, rates could spike suddenly then. And so we're just putting that in there for, for purposes of our analysis. But it also says a twenty-year amortization, which kind of segues into the next issue. This is all the great news. Now, there's a, a downside to some of this from a short-term financial basis. Long-term, this is great news. But on the short-term, we've done some things. And Trina, that's, that's your, well, you gotta look at the chart on page twenty.
Don't skip over that chart.
The chart, the chart's really cool. So, you know, and Fitz noticed this because our number back in two thousand nine was below seventy. So in two thousand eighteen, we'll be back below seventy percent and then we continue to, to trail down. And that'll be good. If we, if we can get ourselves down by sixty percent, then we can start knocking on Moody's door and saying, time to show a little love back.
Kind of back to where we were almost ten years ago. You know, that's a pretty big accomplishment.
I'd tell you, that's some pretty good, I mean, to me, you know, that, that's some pretty good reckless spending and borrowing.
Well, I remember former, former council member Kevin McGee, who's on the faculty at UW Oshkosh, was doing a seminar on municipalities in general. And he talked about, you know, what we did and, you know, Kevin, if you know Kevin, getting a compliment's a tough thing out of Kevin. But he complimented us, we, we bought at the right time. We bought debt at a time when the debt was extremely low. We, and you can see, we peaked almost at eighty percent as a result of that. That was, you could argue that, that was risky, but we bought at the right time. And now we're, we're reaping the benefits of that and I think we will continue to do so. But it was a risk that we took. Now there's some other things that, again, there's, there's always a little, you know, you gotta take your medicine along with this.
Well, kind of with your mention of Kevin, as Harry Truman used to say about economists, you know, send me a one-armed economist. As they always say on the one hand.
Yep, and on the other hand.
So now we're going to the other hand here.
Yes. Well, there's a little bit. And Trina, why don't you get into some of that?
So we'll, we'll go over to page twenty-one. And what will preface this is a discussion that was under item number three, letter B. The impact of borrowing more notes versus bonds and the anticipated impact in the two thousand eighteen budget. One thing that in going through our capital improvement program and adopting a new policy, the one item that we have done is become more responsible borrowers. We're no longer borrowing the truck that lasts ten years under a twenty-year bond. And part of becoming a responsible borrower has increased our short-term debt versus spreading it out and paying for that truck in twenty years. What we are seeing as a direct impact of that is our debt costs are going to increase because we're paying more principal now. So although we have a lower interest rate, not being able to spread that principal out over the twenty years is increasing our required debt payment. It's a good thing and it's very positive.
I liken it to a thirty-year versus a fifteen-year mortgage. Fifteen-year mortgages, everybody wants to get a fifteen-year mortgage, but can you afford the payment? In this case, we couldn't afford not to do the payment because, you know, it was probably more like a fifteen-year truck, but we were borrowing for twenty years. And as we looked at it, we said, we can't be doing this anymore. So it wasn't just taking your direction to say it's eleven point four million to cap it at. We, we followed that, but we also said, as we're meeting with everybody on their CIPs, what's the appropriate borrowing mechanism, if any? In some cases, we said, we shouldn't be borrowing at all. That's why we're now putting a million dollars a year cash into the CIP. Because there was stuff that is in the CIP, but it really isn't a capital improvement program. It really should be funded with cash. So that's number one. And then number two, if it's a fifteen-year truck even, you can't pay a fifteen-year truck over twenty years. So you got, you got ten or twenty options, just like you had a fifteen or a thirty-year mortgage option, you gotta go with the lower option. And that's just a fiscally responsible thing to do. Now, your payments in the short-term are higher. But one of the other things that Moody's looks at, that debt level is, is part of it, value's another one. But a third component they look at that's very important is amount of debt retired in ten years or less. And our number has been growing and that's a good thing because that means we're borrowing more for ten years instead of twenty years. And I've seen that, when I was in Grand Chute, because we were a town, we could do very little twenty-year borrowing. So everything was borrowed over ten years. And that metric helped Grand Chute get a very good Moody's rating because we had zero percent above ten years. We're getting our number down. In addition to our total number, we're getting our, our ten-year debt number up, which is good. And our twenty-year debt number is going down.
So, so we are going to see a increase in our debt service fund for levy increase of about four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for our two thousand eighteen budget. So we have success with our debt, however, some of that success and more responsible borrowing decisions will have a, a budgetary impact.
Well, will there be at some point, will that, you know, we're cycling through, about when do you anticipate that we'll have cycled through this switch or is?
It'll be a gradual change. I mean, simplistically, about ten years, we'll get the full benefit of it because right now, we're borrowing, we're changing our habits. Once we've developed ten years' worth of habits, then they're, they're going to be pretty standard. Twenty-year borrowing, twenty-year stuff's going to get twenty-year borrowing and ten-year stuff's going to get ten-year borrowing.
But, but do we run the risk of a decade ago or two decades ago, running into deferred maintenance costs because we're doing that? Is there?
No, if we're, because deferred maintenance becomes a function of how well we're maintaining. If we say, oh, we gotta pay more in debt, so we're going to cut your operating budget and we cut your police vehicle maintenance, yes, that can come and bite you. One of the things we found that, and the council members remember, in the mid-two thousands, there was a year where the council completely cut all police squad replacement. And I can tell you, the first year I was here, the first year I was here, that had been about five years since that, that year it happened. And the maintenance costs on the police department, that one line item, was ninety thousand dollars. It's now at forty-two thousand. And because the council's committed itself to saying, we're going to replace our squad cars, we're not going to have leaky, rusty vehicles sitting out there. And squad cars, the road's rough on them, even idling. There's a lot of idling cars out there with EAA. Idling cars are, as one of, as Kurt Shainey said today, they're worse than driving them around. Sitting around doing nothing. You sit around doing nothing versus you walk around, people, cars, doesn't matter, you're going to have maintenance problems. Our maintenance is half of what it was in two thousand nine. And that's just because we're replacing them properly, we're maintaining them properly. And so that's where, that's where that, that comes in.
Isn't that one of the benefits, the new field operations facility, the, the amount of maintenance that can be done?
In-house.
In-house. And it's just having the vehicles inside, not sitting outside. You think, you know, a huge piece of equipment can sit outside, but it's no, it's just as delicate as your car as far as.
And I, I think it goes back to what was said earlier too, you know, it was a, you know, we borrowed a lot of money during the downturned economy. But I think we're realizing the benefit of that now. You know, we constructed that during a time period when the borrowing was low. And, and also additionally, I think, and not to get too far away from the financial analysis, but, you know, the council's experiencing a lot more economic development issues. You know, at the council level, you're dealing with those and we're seeing a renewed interest in the community. Because I think when the economy was downturned, we were preparing for when it would be upturn, where other communities were not. So I know it was a bit of a risk there and some people were critical of that strategy, but I think you're, you're seeing the benefit of that now.
Well, also, we, we built it when, when contractors were hungry for business.
Yes, right. Now try and get a contractor.
Yes, right, exactly. That's a, that's the correct point.
So strategically, it was a wise decision financially for not only today, but long, long-term to the future.
But in the short-term, as shown on page twenty-one, that four hundred and thirty-eight thousand number, that's an increase and that's an adjustment of shifting over to more short-term borrowing. But that four hundred and thirty-eight thousand is going into principal payments, which is a good thing. It's not just, it's not like what you were using earlier with the WRS payment. It was all interest. When you're, you're just burning money when you're paying interest. When you're paying principal down, you're making a real impact. So that, that is the opening to where we, where we get into levy options. Because obviously, that's something that we're going to, that's a, that's a must-do. That's something that we've, we've built into our debt, our debt schedule. So that's an extra cost that we have next year. Four thirty-eight is over and above what we are paying in two thousand seventeen. So Trina, why don't you go through the, the model then?
So I think we'll start at the, the top because the one thing we wanted to be able to give to the council coming out of the gate is looking at last year's levy and looking at a zero to five percent increase, what does that put into function or into the, the budget process? So what I've given you is, starting at a zero percent, how much additional dollars will be created through that percent increase, all the way down to the five percent? So if you would increase the levy five percent, that will generate an additional one million eight hundred fourteen thousand and eight, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars of available revenue for expenditures. What I have done then is laid out what are nondiscretionary, so items that will have to be funded through some funding mechanism. So the debt service, which we've already talked about, and then the retirement payouts. So those estimated retirement payouts are actually positive compared to what we have. So they were less in eighteen than what we budgeted in seventeen, which is creating an offset or an improvement. So total nondiscretionary is four hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred. And so if you look up, you're already at for nondiscretionary between a one and two percent increase. Nondiscretionary, excuse me, discretionary items are the other assumptions that we've talked about in this workshop. The wage and benefit increase proposed and then the health and dental insurance increase that was proposed. So those are coming in at, per the previous worksheets, the one million six hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. So ultimately, I know you all understand this, but what I'm telling you is if all these assumptions hold, a five percent levy increase doesn't even fund these assumptions. And we haven't even talked about any changes in operations. That's a static operations budget.
So that's why we gave the department's direction that there'll be no increases in any other areas. So we're, we're staring down, if you, if we buy into these assumptions and do nothing between now and the time the budget's submitted, you'd see a two million dollar increase and that's even more than five percent. We know that that's unacceptable, so we're just framing you what we need to do. So we need to take, we need to take a look at the discretionary increases because the nondiscretionary, we got four hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred we had to cover. We know that and we're, we're accepting that. The other ones, we have to take a look at what we can do. Some of that has to do with collective bargaining. We gotta work hard at collective bargaining. We gotta take a look at health and dental insurance. Is there anything we can do there? We're putting in eight percent as an assumption, but obviously, we gotta do something to get that down. So those are the challenges that we have facing us. And as we move on and come up with ideas, as health insurance starts gelling, we'll be meeting with the, the employee focus group that we have that we talk to the employees about because we want them to understand what this is. You might hear from them as this comes out because you know that we've got an eight percent assumption. You also know that an eight percent assumption gets us towards a two million dollar hole that we have to fill. When you get the budget from Trina and me, the second week of October, the first meeting of October that you attend, you're going to get the budget. The budget will be balanced. It'll be balanced with a series of recommendations. And you can certainly give us direction, which is why we have the next half hour, but you know what we're staring down and what we're going to have to fill. We will fill this and I suspected over the course of the discussion that you're going to have, five percent's unacceptable. We know it's unacceptable and, and you've given us that direction. It's unacceptable. So we gotta close that gap. We know four hundred and eleven nine is, is a given. But how can we get these other numbers down? How can we save in those? And how can we look at some other changes to the budget? So that's why we gave this department's direction of a zero percent on these other things. Because commodities and wages are things that are in the personnel world and the finance world and we'll work on those.
This seems to just bring us back to that point. point that the mayor brought up about discovering new ways for, or new sources of revenue.
Yes. Now, it, we know the causes, we, we can't dwell too much on it, because we can't sit there and bemoan what, what
Right.
hand we're dealt. But shared revenue is not sharing revenue. It's, we'll give you a little until we need more, and then we'll take it away. So, and, and I know there's been accusations of money grab. I would submit to you that we're not the ones grabbing the money, we're having the money grabbed from us. The sales taxes and the income taxes come from the employers and the city employees. And I say city employees, I mean, employees in the city of Oshkosh, our residents. It goes to Madison, and the sharing isn't coming back. That's enough of my complaining, but the reality is, is that's what we have to deal with, and the only tool we have is property taxes. We don't have that. And with that said, the other mandate that we're under, which is the, the little asterisk that Trina added, this makes no assumptions on expenditure restraint. And as was mentioned earlier, what did, you have the number, what's the number for a?
Expenditure.
Uh, well, CPI, which is the component of expenditure restraint.
Last one I saw was like 1.65%.
The other add-on for expenditure restraint is net new construction. We are not counting on net new construction, or we're counting on net new construction of zero. So we're looking at maybe a 1.6% increase. We must follow that mandate, or we risk losing the $1 million in expenditure restraint funds. So we haven't even gotten into that yet, but when we deliver a budget to you, we have to deliver a budget that's compliant with expenditure restraint. So it'll be in the neighborhood of 1.6%, and that's with assumptions of 2.5% on wages, 8% on health insurance, 5% on dental. Clearly, something's got to give. And, and something, we're going to have to make something happen so that you, because you will get a budget of no more than 1.6%. You will get a budget that's, that's not going to be proposing a 5% increase in taxes, because we all know that that's unacceptable. So that's kind of where we're at.
I think it's a good explanation. The only thing I can add to it is, you know, you asked the question about generating more revenue. There's even constraints on any fees. There's, there's constraints on those parts of our ability to, to generate revenue, too, so.
Are you?
It's not only.
Can't refer, or hitting at the license registration fee that was discussed?
Well, that's one, but I think as a real.
But a referendum if the budget goes through the.
Well, and, and that, that only goes to, that can only be used, that's not, that's a restricted fund. One of the things is, is, and I'm not, I'm not looking to balance our budget on the back of the employees, but one thing that I, I've said this many years is that the, the employee premium share on health insurance has got to get real. The average, the average, you know, the, the non-governmental employee is paying 20 and 30% of their premiums. And I'm not, and I'm not saying to, you know, I'm not going to say jack it up to this 20 and 30%, but we have to get real.
Then you're essentially saying they're taking a pay cut.
That's what the public sector is taking all along, because they have seen their premiums go from 15 to 20, or the private, from 15 to 20, and now up to 30. That's a pay cut for them, too. So, I mean, I'm not, I think that that's something that needs to be on, on the agenda. I think something else that needs to be discussed is, is, and this is at the state level, and it's not going to happen, is binding arbitration.
One of the things that we know we need to take a look at, and a lot of it is to employee or just human behavior, human nature, as well as what the rules are in terms of what we can and cannot do. We can change the premium contribution for non-reps. It must be negotiated with, with the represented. We do have flexibility in the plan structure, and that's, you know, that's why we have to take a look at that. So we may not necessarily go the route you're suggesting because of that.
I mean, is, all, you know, health insurance, every option needs to be looked at.
Right.
Is, is to get a better, is to get a more realistic percentage of that cost shared by the employees as it is in the private sector.
And we are, we're, we're looking at that very carefully, and hopefully, when we talk to the committee soon, you know, they'll have some ideas for us to move forward.
I'm sorry.
We got discussion going. I'm happy. I'm just, we're listening now.
We spoke briefly about whether or not we were going to be looking at the self-insurance, pros and cons.
We're looking at that. Right now, I'm inclined not to recommend it at this time. I think that's just a, that's a very general statement. Timing's got to be right for that, and Steve knows, I mean, we've had this discussion before. I'm certainly an advocate for it, but at the same time, we got to do it under the right circumstances. What we know, and because we're not self-insured right now, we don't know all the details like we normally do about usage, but what we, what little we know, I don't anticipate recommending it at this time. But I'm not ruling out for the future. And I know, because the discussion we had, when, when Steve was advocating for it, the county was moving towards getting out of the self-insured plan, and we ended up following the county's lead, albeit a couple of years later, because that Wisconsin County's Association Plan was, was a good deal. And when we got, when we switched to that, I came in and said, I'm, I'm changing my mind. Let's get out of self-insurance. And it worked out, it was a very good move at a very good time. We timed it very well. Timing's everything. I'm not sure if we're ready to go in, and Lori and I have talked about this, so I thank you for reminding me with that question. I don't expect us to be getting that option to you this year. Now, the county has since gone back to self-insurance. And I know Steve made the recommendation, because he thought it was a good trend, and everybody's trend is the right time. So we'll, we'll wait and see, but I just don't anticipate it this year.
Trina, three things, three things that stick in my mind from that, that conference in Madison was the present, presentation that Mayor Barrett of Milwaukee made as far as the amount of money Milwaukee sends to Madison, and how much comes back to Milwaukee. And we're trying to do the same, the same study here, that we're shipping a whole lot more money in the wagon down south, and it's coming back this way. But the discussion also was, you know, if new sources of funding was, fees were one thing, sales tax was another. And I think there are counties that, Green Bank, or Dor, or Brown County keeps doing it effectively. Door County certainly understands that tourism is a big deal, and the tourists are spent, are paying the money, not the citizens. I think we have to look at, it has to be done county-wise. I think we have to look at it, considering the, we're not maybe as tourist-oriented as a Door County, but we have probably a lot more people.
Over $11 million.
We have more, more people coming here, so there's.
Eighth largest.
Right, so I think that's, we have to have that discussion with Winnebago County. I mean, it's.
The only thing is, is that the half percent sales tax that would be instituted by the county goes to the building on Jackson Street. It stays there.
There's very few counties like Sheboygan who divvies it back up to the municipalities.
Right.
Can we, can we do it like Sheboygan?
One of the discussions coming up Friday.
That is a decision that has to be made at the county level.
We have to discuss the discussion.
The, the higher-level discussion is also to do what other states do, and the shared revenue program, just completely revamp it, and then give a 1% of the 5% we already pay to municipalities. And that's very common throughout the country that.
Can you repeat that?
We pay 5% sales tax.
Yep.
In a lot of states, 1% of that 5% goes to cities. And so the state's shared revenue program goes down, and then we live and die, that's good and bad, with how the economy flows. Retail sales go down like they did in '09, you take a hit. But then, at least it follows the sharing, the shared revenue got cut in 2010, and it has never been recovered. We're getting $1 million less than we did seven, eight years ago. If the economy, if we got the 1% sales tax, as the economy recovers, we'd get to it. We'd have to cut back on lean times, but at least when times are picking up, and because of the value that we have in our community with being a retail destination, we would benefit from that. But there'll be winners and losers in that, and to change that, that's one of the topics on the discussion agenda for Friday. It's not just about asking the county to enact a half-cent sales tax. It's like, let's completely blow this thing up and revamp it. So Deb, you, I know, I knew you had a question for me, I'm sorry.
Well, well, for both you and Trina, I'm curious, when we look at the options for the proposal based on the assumptions that you laid out for us today, do the department heads have kind of a list of, you know, what, what happens to their individual or respective departments if we had 0% increase, 1%, 2%, 3%? You know, do, do they have something that would say we would have to do this, this, and this? If this happens at 0%, the 1% and so forth?
We've done it a little differently in the past. We haven't presented that to them. We said, if you had to cut your budget by 1%, 3%, 5%, then they would tell us what those impacts would be. And that's a discussion that we generally have over the course of things. If we had to cut something, where, where would it be? Now, that's a tough question to ask a department head, because, because the, the first answer they give is the first cut on our list, and they, they, that's human nature. I mean, Trina's looking for ways to save money. Somebody gives them a suggestion, she follows that suggestion. So given the unfairness of that question, it's still a legitimate question.
Right.
And departments know that. We have, when we meet with the department heads, we have those discussions about what.
The other tough part, I think, too, that we talked about early on at the beginning of the session is there's really three big departments, police, fire, and public works. So those are, that's where the lion's share of the money is. Could wipe primarily all the other departments off, and maybe not be able to come up with enough money to satisfy those numbers for those individual cuts.
And those are the three departments that probably 95% of our citizens.
Consider to be essential services.
Yeah, essential services.
So it's, it's kind of tough to, to hold those areas harmless and then try to make those amounts up.
Department revenue and your disagreement how the levy restraint, I mean, last year, you argued it, and you said it, they misunderstood it, and they don't understand, have they softened, have they changed, have anything changed out of that discussion from my perspective?
We reached a settlement, but it's, it kind of resets, it's reset everything. Trina, how would you describe it? Because you're the ones that dealt, you, you dealt with them and negotiated what I believe it to be was a very, the best deal we could possibly get.
Unfortunately, they are not seeing the logic in our, how we have processed and how we have applied expenditure restraint for several years. They are sticking with their new interpretation, which many cities still feel is not concurrent with what is written in state statutes. However, they are, have moved forward and have full authority to enforce their new interpretation of expenditure restraint, which lives up, which leads us, or leaves us with very few ability to circumvent or to modify or work around expenditure restraint. We are really working with the program, and we don't have a lot of options like we used to have. We still will think about it, and we will look at it creatively, creatively. But their new interpretation of expenditure restraint has applied to all municipalities that are drawing down and benefiting from that. One thing that could and will benefit us, if we continue to remain compliant under their new regulation and enforcement, more cities are going to have to fall off, or, or towns and villages, which that pie then just spreads out to the people that qualify. So it could drive more revenue in, but it really is going to require that discipline to meet what they're, they are issuing for the percent increase in here. I think that there is opportunity. Many of you may have heard of a, a blow-up concept, and that will be something that I think will, we will entertain in the future, because there, there is, there is some good strategy in that, but it's going to be very strategic and applied in the, the proper year. Because, just because you don't qualify in one year, doesn't mean you can never qualify again. You reset your base then, which allows you to expand it back out. So.
Explain what the blow-up strategy is, I'm not familiar.
She means not meet our obligations under expenditure restraint.
Right.
It would just exceed that amount, kind of blow through that on a one-time basis, and then it, and then it resets.
Then we, then we lose that $1 million for.
For that year.
For that year.
And next year.
For at least one year, and you got to get back into compliance, and then you kind of reset and reorganize your finances so you can take advantage of whatever allowances they will permit.
Most efficiently, then.
So it, it's almost like a, a reorg, a financial reorganization. I wouldn't say like a.
Use the B-word.
Yeah, not like bankruptcy.
Like a restructuring.
But it's more like a, a financial restructuring, so that we would be more, able to be more compliant in the future.
But does that hurt our bond ratings or any of that kind of stuff?
No, but it'll, for a year, we'll lose $1 million, and that would, that would be, that would be devastating.
Have you heard anything coming out of Madison that feels, well, last year, they put money back in the recycling program? Or does it appear that that's? Not a lot's coming out of the budget out of Madison, so I don't really know where they're at on that issue.
I don't think they know where they're at.
They're going to restore the recycling program to a couple of years ago, which, which will give us a little bit of benefit, but that'll be in the recycling fund. There, even with all the disruption over transportation funding, it looks like there may be an increase, albeit modest, in transportation funding, which is, I think it was partially to keep cities quiet on the transportation debate. But the debate at the state level is really, is something we do need to pay attention to, even though we're not directly impacted by it, because the amount of debt that they're carrying on, they're not, they don't have one of those spreadsheets like we do that's limiting their borrowing. They're going just the opposite direction. That is going to have a huge impact on the transportation, on the gas tax fund in, in future years. Because their amount, their percentage of gas tax revenue that's going towards debt is increasing a great deal. And that percentage then takes it away from operations and maintenance, and we're the operations and maintenance side. They give us $3 million plus, plus or minus a year. We may get a bump. We might get $50,000 this year, which is, you know, is.
We'll take it.
We'll be happy to take it, but that's a modest bump, and it's, it's really just, I think, a trickle to kind of divert attention away from the fact that they've got major debt issues that they have to address. And there's not unanimity within individual parties, let alone the legislature as a whole, and that's going to be a challenge down the road.
They're, they're talking about borrowing money as a way of saving money.
Right. Short-term.
But I.
But going back to Councilmember Allison Osbees, I, I would like to kind of see maybe some scenario of each department, what would have, how their budget would look if they got a 0% increase, and maybe a 1 or 2, just so that, kind of like what you've done over the years. If we delete this, it changes the levy this. If we increase this, it changes the levy to that. And just see kind of what the scenarios are. I mean, I think every year we've been on council, you've kind of said, what are we comfortable with? I don't think, we've been asked that this year, a 3% increase, or a 2% increase, or a 0% increase.
You, you can go ahead. I just think it's, it's.
I think that, you saw them out there, and I don't want to do that, but I, I do think it's important that we start at the bottom of what can you live with at a 0% increase, what can you not, and then it goes upward versus downward.
And I'm also challenging the department to find more efficient ways to do things.
And I know you're way into, you're talking to departments, and your budgets are probably, probably 75% there. So we're starting almost from scratch, and I don't want to quite go there, but at the same time, you know, I hear it in the community, we can't keep feigning and feigning and feigning, the close gaps in our budget, citizens are tired of fees. You know, I know they're tired of hearing it from us that the state's putting the screws to us, but it's the truth. But that only goes so far, too, and I think it comes to a point where we either got to come in with a very minimal increase or no increase, and if a few services. And if a few services do have to get cut, depending what that would be, knowing that police, fire, and transit and public works is our most important things that we offer as a community. We are a service entity, business. I totally understand that, my whole career's been in public service. So that being said, though, you know, negotiations with police, fire, and transit, that can go anywhere. We go to arbitration, we could get beat. You know, we can ask for the world, but we're not going to get it, so.
And we've got to find new funding sources. That's the whole.
And what is that?
That's not just to find.
Fees, fees, fees.
I, I had, I had the city manager of Fond Lake tell me, he would drive, he drives up here to launch his boat because it's cheaper to launch a boat in Oshkosh than Fond Lake. You and I talked about it in Madison. We have got to really look at fees, not to our citizens per se, but those people.
Coming into our.
Who don't live in the city of Oshkosh, but they live in the townships because, gee, we pay less taxes. But, but they're using our services and they're getting them for next to nothing. I think we've got to take a serious look at that.
We do it with the, the yard waste facility. There's a residential fee and there's a.
We do it with the ambulance.
You know.
Township residents.
You know, is, is kind of following up on your, I mean, I agree, you know, raising fees. But I think that the, that what we need to do is, is as part of this proposal of, of saying, you know, is, can I just, let me back, let me back up. I just want to make sure I've got my math straight. On discretionary, all right, what I'm, what I'm going to say by discretionary spending at the department level, that is not personnel. That is already at zero percent, correct?
Non-personnel is at zero.
Yeah, non-personnel, which is, is, and that, to me, that's what is considered, you know, we could call that discretionary. Because that's the stuff, all right. And then we have the personnel. I think what we need to do is, is that the, the departments need, is that we need to ask the departments as part of this is, is to say, if you come in at, if we come in at a zero percent increase or a zero percent levy increase, citizens of Oshkosh, this is what it's going to cost you. This is what you are going to lose. The other night, we heard about the park system and that we need to support our parks. I'm not saying we're going after the parks, but the thing is, this is to say, okay, to the citizens, you've told me you want zero. Okay? So what we'll do is zero, but to get you to zero, this is what's going to happen. Your garbage is only going to be picked up every other week. Your recycling may be picked up only every four weeks. Rat, and, and is, is, it's similar to what we did with the cash flow analysis on the utilities? Is to basically flat out say, this is the cost of delivering this service to you. And if we do this, this is how it's going to impact you. And, and, you know, none of us want to raise fees because all of us that are at this table, if, if we access that service, we pay those fees. So it's not like we get a get out of jail free card, we all get our tax bills. But that's, when we talk about educating the citizenry, that's what we need to educate them on. Is that they need to understand that, okay, we can, we can deliver a zero percent increase, but to do that, it's going to cost, it, it's going to be this. And yeah, there will be people who go, well, you know what, I don't use that service anymore, so what the heck, cut it. But there's other people that use it, use that service. Yeah, we have public safety, don't worry, Will, you can put your hand down. When I'm done, you can jump in. But is, you know, yeah, we have public safety, but we have the register of D, or the, we have the, the city clerk who does a vital function for the city. Just last night, we approved this, that replating of something because we had bad records. Now, we can cut back on our, you know, we can say to the assessors officer, whoever it is, you got to take this much out of your budget. Things say, okay, we can do that, but we're not going to be able to invest in, in this. So we're not going to be able to, to file real estate transactions or we're not going to be able to do this. That's what we need to hear, is, is if we do, if we do this, is there is a cause and there is an effect. And we need to understand, if we're going to cause this, this is what the effect is going to be.
It is a cutting services, pure and simple. All right.
So I'm kind of interested in looking at some other creative endeavors. And one of them is, and I'm just going to give this as a potential example, investigating, for example, if we fix more roads, how much wear and tear, operational, maintenance type costs are saved on these expensive vehicles? As a follow-up to that, maybe that's not necessarily a big, huge savings. What if we use technology and GIS in looking at rerouting them as a course of practice over the ones that are in better condition? Having taken the tour, and I think you probably took it this year, too, with, you know, police, fire, transit, you know, those rougher areas, and we've not been able to really keep pace with our road improvement. And we consistently see in our surveys from our citizens, streets, right? So I would be interested in seeing some creative use of either technology or analysis of, you know, we might have to invest more in fixing more roads, but what is the savings on that wear and tear on those really expensive vehicles?
At the, wear and tear on city vehicles?
Yes.
I, off the top of my head, probably based on the fact that if you're, you know, is, I, I don't even know what the cost of, say, New York Street was, but what was the total cost of the rebuild of New York?
It was six million. I mean, the whole stretch of New York or just?
Basically the city, the city, the, yeah, the, the cost that we just did. Okay, so six million dollars bonded over twenty years with, you know, even if you don't pay in, in any interest, six million dollars? You indicated that the maintenance budget at the police department was forty?
It was, it was, now it's about forty-two, it used to be ninety.
You'd have to come up with a, I don't think.
What about our quints that, you know, have to, is that what it's called? The quint?
Quints, the big ones.
Yeah, big ones that, you know, require these really big ticket type maintenance expenditures. And, and again, I could be way off.
They should have dropped to the call because the time of service is critical.
Same to the ambulance.
Police, fire, ambulance.
But is it shorter to go, or shorter to go?
Depends where the call is.
To your point, maybe we should be looking at the vehicles that are putting the wear and tear on our streets, such as?
Yes.
Heavy.
Heavy equipments.
Again, state.
They set the, you know, vehicle registration, can't go over eight thousand pounds.
I just had a point, like, I mean, city residents, they, they don't like fees assessed to themselves. But out of town people that are going to come here no matter what, like, I mean, are we on our legal rights to have like a hotel charge of like five dollars a room?
Oh, we have that. We do have that.
But can we raise that? And has anybody given notice of it?
State's limited by the state.
State's limits us.
You would know because there's restrictions.
Are we at our limit?
Chicago's at fourteen percent.
We could go into this discussion, but I think it would be better to explain it. But we have a, our room tax goes to the convention visitors bureau, seventy percent of it, right? Goes to them to be our tourism advocate for the city log desk. We keep thirty percent of that that we can use. Some of that also goes to the grand.
Some of it goes to paying off the convention center.
And then operations of the convention.
And operations of convention. So room tax is controlled, what you can get is controlled by state statute, correct?
Correct. Are we at our limit on that?
Yep.
But one of the things that, that we've kicked around is, and Trina's done more research on this, is what's called a resort tax. And Trina, why don't you just give them a little brief, even though we know it's seven o'clock, but that's okay.
Hey, wanted to spend a few minutes talking about some direction for the TIF workshop, so.
Yep, we do.
Anyway, the resort tax is something that.
So very similar to the sales tax provision. It's, it was developed for municipalities that have a large amount of tourism. The, the existing municipalities that are using that resort fee tax, actually only, I believe it's two or three of them actually meet the qualification of the required tourism percent into the economy. You can receive an exception through state legislature. And several other municipalities have found their way through the door and been granted that exception and are now charging that resort fee tax. It's, would be a tax that'd be year-round right now, unless you would look at a provision to try to get a, a state provision that would say, maybe it's just May to September. But that would be something you would work out on the state level because it would.
What is the tax collected on, is it similar to a sales tax?
Yes.
Yep, it's just basically like sales tax.
Rylanders, one, they get about fifty thousand dollars a year in resort tax.
I think Wisconsin Dells is, would be another example.
A lot of people that have resorts on lakes.
What threshold do you have to meet?
I believe it's like forty percent of your sales tax have to be derived from tourism, but they consider tourism shopping.
Oh.
But I think.
I think we should look at it.
A time period that you designate, does that percentage have to be acquired within your designated? Like if we would say May to August?
I, I think, and I don't want to speak for you, Trina, but I guess, you know, there's a set formula. But I think what Trina was trying to suggest is because we have unique costs, because we're Wisconsin's event city, primarily through the summer, other communities, the legislature has made an exception to the formula and said, hey, because of these special circumstances, these cities should also be allowed to have the resort tax. So we know we have those special, unique circumstances, especially as they affect our special events. You know, that's something we could convey.
I'm trying, I'm going from memory, but looking at some of my hotel bills, there's two or three line items for different taxes in different cities and so forth, or states. I think we should, as I said, you know, we've got to pursue ways of increasing revenues and not through property taxes.
Yeah, we have done a fair amount of research as it relates to our special event fees and all the costs associated with that. I think Finance Director Larson has done a good job and the committee's done a good job. So we have a lot of information that is available to us, for that purpose, anyway.
The real kicker at that is it would require legislative approval and we'd have to get, at a minimum, our local legislators to sponsor something like that that would enable us to do that. We don't have the ability to unilaterally do it because I don't think we meet the threshold to unilaterally do it. We'd have to get, we'd have to get the exception. But I think we could make a fairly good case. I mean, everything that, that the council had to endure through the special event fee discussion had to do with the impact and the benefit of tourism on the community. And there certainly are areas of the economy that benefit from the tourism industry. But the trickle-down effect doesn't necessarily come to the local units of government.
Well, and that kind of, oh, sorry.
Trina, do you know the timeframe for approval for something like this? Would this be something potentially for 2018 or are we looking at nineteen, twenty?
We're probably looking at nineteen, twenty. And with that said, this really, expenditure restraint doesn't go away. So the idea would be that this would help backfill revenue sources that, that we, so we don't rely on fees and we don't rely on property taxes. We rely on this to cover those basic services. But, you know, but then you're, you're touching other areas of the economy that benefit from tourism that we, as a city, don't receive. Right now, the, the benefit, the direct benefit we get is through the room tax, but it's only at hotels.
Right.
Clearly, there's other elements of the economy. I was at Walmart the other night and I was there between seven forty-five and eight fifteen. And at eight o'clock, the concert ended and the campers from EAA were there. And they just overwhelmed Target for a brief amount of time, but they were restocking for the next day. And those are, that's where Trina talks about, one of the, the most popular activity for tourists is shopping. Sounds weird, but think about when you go on vacation.
Door County.
You shop. So there are benefits, restaurants or others. I mean, the restaurants don't pay into the C V B, even though clearly, from a tourism standpoint, restaurants benefit. The question is, it goes back to the mayor's point, what's the proper taxing mechanism for our community? Property tax is pretty outdated. And the exceptions for, the exemption, excuse me, the exemptions for businesses are increasing. Personal property tax is likely to go away. There have been so many exemptions, quite honestly, I'm not going to sing the blues that much about it because it's been, you think about other businesses, some businesses have been, have been unfairly treated by being, being non-exempt while others have gotten exemptions. And the, the weird taxing scenarios that these folks go through, property tax, personal property tax is, is outdated, which was a lot of the big argument. And quite honestly, it's, it's a pain to administer. Administratively, it's a pain to administer.
Both directions.
But at the end, but at the end of the day, the local, we'll call it property taxpayer, payer, the resident, they're the ones at the end of the day that are picking up the bill for everybody else.
The increases have been increasingly been pushed over to the residents. And so they're the ones that get in the, as one, somebody called it, the annual greeting card from the city. And that pro, is property really the proper base from a taxing standpoint?
There's an impression we got from our, again, our meeting, the whole system in the state has to be redone. It's totally outdated.
I guess, you know, one of my questions kind of relates to this larger question regarding the event city and whether or not by having that increase in tourism and driving up the service sector, maybe not necessarily family-supporting wage jobs, does that entail end up costing us more services? Because of the stressors to those family budgets, those working-class family budgets? I mean, it's, it's a rhetorical question here, just throwing that out there that, you know, while it may be deemed a success in some measures, does it, in the whole lifecycle analysis, end up costing us more on the other end in services?
I'm not sure I totally understand, but if you're getting to the point of saying, do we find ourselves chasing retail in order to, because now sales are the big thing? That's a danger and it's a legit, it's a legitimate point that you're making. And I can show you communities that, that do have sales tax and they chase, they chase the retail. That's where you also get into the discussion. I thought, I heard you say service. Service is another way to do it, too, because then it's a little broader. It may be more reflective of our service economy. It's not just, not just all retail-based. I saw that on one of the subtitles for our discussion on Friday. High-level discussion, I think the short term is maybe discuss with our legislators about would they be willing to take a look at a resort tax for us because of our unique stance as event city? But recognize, you don't put all your marbles in that because then you find yourself, if we're just chasing retail, I think Lori's point is well-taken. We could find ourselves economically attracting just low-wage jobs, which isn't good for us. We need that diversity.
Retail implies a lot of big box stores and we're finding that, we've raised the question, can we afford box stores with the.
Right.
Services, infrastructure they require, the services, and then they turn around and sue us that.
Just making a big Jenga puzzle here. Pull out one and you got a problem.
And I think, the one thing the mayor, we talked about down at the conferences, if you really look at the city of Oshkosh, and I think we're a really good example, the state is relying on municipalities to be the economic engines to drive sales tax. That five percent that everybody pays or almost everybody when they're going to the grocery store, all of that revenue has no direct impact on the city. It's all being driven up to the state level. And how many local resources are we putting into and partnering through public-private partnerships to try to drive and be that economic engine for the state and don't see benefit from that? It, one of the most difficult things is, is our property taxpayers get their bill that says city. that says City of Oshkosh once a year, and so, and do they relate that to their services? Maybe, maybe not. But how often when they get their sales tax received from Target or Pick and Save, do they say, oh, I just paid $1.30 to the state, you know? Or how often when you get your paycheck, you look at your Wisconsin withholdings and say, I just paid to the state? There, there's a lot of ways that we're driving direct revenue flow into the state, but we're not seeing that relationship come back to the city. But then we're supposed to be, continue to be these econo, economic drivers and drive the engine of, and create new business. So how do we do that if the, if the relationship isn't cross functional? I mean, so much larger discussion, but-
Or if we need to continually cut services because our budget is eroded.
Are you saying that the cities are a maker and the state is a taker?
That's what Mayor Barrett pretty much said with his slides.
The masters, like fines, the tickets, the-
But then again, we also have to remember that it is the golden rule, and those people with the gold make the rules, and most of the gold is down in-
We have to keep more of our gold.
Yeah. TIF.
TIF. You would like some direction from the council as to our TIF workshop. There was a lot of discussion last night, everything from timing, when we get the material, to look backs, to, one thing we discussed, a few of us, Mark, you and I, that there's been some TIFs awarded, and the projects just sit there and sit there and sit there. We need a timeline, either do it or-
Kind of like our liquor license, you know?
Yeah.
You get a TIF and there's no activity within a, say, a year, give us an update, you know, that type of thing. I think that needs to be, the developers need to know that. I think, you know, who, who all needs to be at the table when a TIF is discussed before you even get to the council?
I, I, I like, I like some of the models that I've seen with other municipalities, not just in Wisconsin, but in Iowa and Minnesota, is, you know, I like the idea of a, from the beginning of the TIF, once, once the application is deemed worthy and it's passed kind of all the tests, so we're not talking about the ones that, you know, they get in and they know automatically that it's, it's not a good fit, or they're not, it's not a stable application. You know, then, you know, I would like to see and have and model after some of those other communities where they have, you know, the, their municipal or city attorney, and then also their municipal finance director as part of that, just to complete that package. I think that's important, to have, have that a part of it, and I think also to, from the perspective of the taxpayer, to know that two key departments of that nature, like in other municipalities, certainly gives the taxpayer a sense of peace with it as well.
Is this some, is this something that should be part of the long range finance committee's charge? You two are on it, I'm not, so.
I think this is council's. I really do.
It's the policy.
This is council policy, and Long Range Finance Committee did approve, you know, was used to put the TIF policy together, and we have the basic framework now. Now I think it's up to us to-
We could.
-build out, is, is, you know.
The, the other thing, I guess, that I would, I would like to recommend, and I did talk to Mr. Davis after the council meeting yesterday, because I think he may have had some confusion of of comments that have come from council over the last couple of months, is that I think one of the things that would be beneficial to council would be that, you know, like, say, for instance, you know, we get our packets on Friday, and then, you know, before a Tuesday meeting. So, and typically, you know, we approve the TIF first, and then generally, the following council meeting is when we approve the developers agreement. I think that Friday, before the TIF be on the agenda, we should be provided with the TIF along with the developers agreement, so that at minimum, we have three weeks to digest the developers agreement, therefore able to contact city staff, so that if there is a majority of council contacting staff with a concern or a direction regarding the developers agreement, there's time for staff to talk to the developers, so that we don't get into a situation like we've had last night, and last night was not unique. We've run into that situation before, where, you know, it's a, it's a blue light Kmart special, if it doesn't get taken care of right now, it's not going to happen, everything's going to fall apart, and, you know. So I think that might be a great way to alleviate that, so that there's, there's not the situation that that we've had, not every time, but sometimes.
I also think, you know, what are the other options for us besides this? I know we've steered money to go EDC for, for, you know, economic development. Do we have some other opportunities to work with developers other than creating a TIF or, you know, I don't want to say territorial, but in a sense, you know, we, the riverfront, we've got a lot of expensive TIFs sitting out there. You know, are there other areas of the city that, you know, we, we would say, we're only going to go 75%, or we're only going to go 50%, or whatever it might be, in that part of the city because of the growth of that area, or whatever it might be? It's more, not as conducive maybe as an industrial site versus more of a restaurant site, or some other hotel site or something like that, you know, where, you know, our, our code dictates some of that, of what can be built in certain areas, but maybe even the financial support of what we get to certain areas of the-
Another thing, too, should we, we've got a lot of vacant, we own a lot of land, both in the central city, all the industrial parks. We just started to put signage up in the last few years, land for sale. Should we indicate that there might be TIF financing available?
I brought that up earlier, yeah, there's communities that do that. I mean, Greenville just got a big company, and they had it advertised as TIF land available, you know, project available. You go up 5139 by Wausau, they got it, and Powne Tonawater has signage that says, you know, TIF assistance.
But it depends, but it depends on what that, that means, because in our industrial parks, it means we have really gotten the price of that land down to, you know, 25,000, 30,000 an acre, and it's got everything included. That's a huge benefit versus buying something else and doing it yourself.
But that being said, do we, do we periodically reassess that by knowing what the value of it is? Do we, you know, do we periodically, every, say, three years, if we have land in our industrial park that it was, say, 3,000 acre, well, now maybe because it's less land available, it's 5,000 acre. Do we do, do we relook or reevaluate the, the value of the land that we own?
All right. You were trying to say something.
No, I, I just wanted to kind of echo what you guys are saying, and it, it sounds to me like what both the mayor and Councilmember Herman is saying, is looking at going more the city driven TIF, where we establish through community development what those specific needs are, and, and only grant TIF to those rather than developer led. This is kind of what I've been trying to articulate, but essentially, rather than somebody, you know, just popping up with, well, we, we feel like doing such and such, you know, we, I think we need to get better at saying what our needs are and saying, we will incentivize this or this at this rate or that rate, as opposed to waiting at the mercy of somebody to just come up with the next great idea.
I guess aviation industrial parks are good, good point. We want aviation related industry in that park only. We don't want any other industry in that park. Well, do we have enough of, say, one entity versus another, or do we want to give more money towards job creation test?
Yes, right.
Versus other-
Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate, since this is a budget workshop, I've got some good ideas that you've thrown out there. I'd encourage you to give us more, because we can lay these out for discussion points for you to give us direction on. I just don't want to, we, we advertise this as a budget workshop, so, but I appreciate all of those.
Yeah.
Well, it's sort of budget related.
So the next, the next budget workshop, and please give me more, I didn't mean to cut it off, I just, I started getting a little antsy, and if Lynn was here, she'd be kicking me right about now.
No, she's on vacation.
She is. But next, next meeting, state budget update, we hope to have something to share with you, but you'll know before us. And then the financial model, as we start to mesh that a little more. Some more historical numbers, our comparison spending, our audit presentation will be scheduled for that day. TIF seven closure, what that means, both good and not good, fund balance, how we're doing there, and then just our six month, little in depth, how we're doing mid, mid year.
How was the date on that?
That will be Tuesday, August 29th at 5:00 PM. That's our fifth Tuesday. So it wasn't off week until we did these two workshops, but it'll probably be a good week for that, for us to do that. It'll be just, just before Labor Day, and just before departments submit their final budgets to us. What's the deadline for departments to submit?
August 11th.
That's right, we moved it up. So we'll have an idea of where we are at that point.
Right.
So that's all we have.
Thank you. Thank you everyone.
All right. Thanks a lot.